Good evening. My name's Chaka Iovin. I'll be presiding over to this evening's meeting of the planning board, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. First thing I'm gonna do is some administrative announcements for those in attendance under the provisions of the open meeting law. Attendees are informed that this meeting may be recorded by Urban Media Arts, formerly M A T V. I have not been notified that any other video or audio recording of this meeting will occur. The next thing I'd like to do, starting with Ronnie Verma, if we could do our roll call.
Ronnie Raj Verma, Planning Board.
Riza Gray, Planning Board.
Diane Chuha, Planning Board.
Ken Antonucci, Planning Board.
Chaka Iovin, Planning Board.
Eric McCush, Planning Board.
Pat Hayes, Planning Board.
Eric Henry, Plan Board.
Henry Susi, Planning Board.
Stephanie Stone, Planning Board.
Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda this evening is one, two, three, six Eastern Ave. I see the petition of present. If you'd come up, first thing I'd just like to remind everyone, speak into the microphones. Also, for those speaking at the podium, if you could speak into the microphone, give us your name and residential address for the record, and then sign the clipboard. So we have the proper spelling and address and things like that.
My name is Craig.
Yes, oh, hold on a second. Notice needs to be read into the record first. I'm sorry.
The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Council, two fifteen Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass. At seven P. M. on Wednesday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, on the petition of Craig Murphy on behalf of Murphy Avakin Realty LLC in permit application number C M I D zero six two three five two dash two thousand and twenty-three, seeking a special permit under title one-two-point-two-eight-point-zero-one-zero-E of the code of the city of Malden to structurally change and extend pre-existing non-conforming property in the industrial one zoning district, namely to construct in addition to the first and second floors of the existing building at the property known as and numbered one-two-three-six Eastern Avenue, Malden, and by city's assessors parcel I D. Number one-five-four-five-zero-zero-zero-one-one.
Thank you, Diane. And sir, if you would like to start your presentation now?
Yes, my name is Craig Murphy. My address is fifty Bolts Wayne Way, number five-one-four, Chelsea, Massachusetts, zero-two-one-five-zero. I'm the president of Murphy Avakin LLC. I also own C R G Graphics at the address that we're talking about. Can I, can I pass these things out to you? Because I'm gonna refer to these. Is that okay?
Um, I think we already have them. Is that your?
I'm not these, because these are showing you some of the things that have been referred to by Michelle.
Okay, yeah, sure. You can pass them out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. Have everybody seen it? Okay, good. I hope you all like it, because we spent a lot of work on it. So this is the building that we're talking about. And, and no matter what happens here, I have to tell you that I love Malden. I came from Somerville four years ago, just under four years ago. And the government here is unbelievable. So no matter what happens, I tell you, I love Malden. I also have to do a shuttle for Michelle. Michelle spent a lot of time with me, probably more than she really should have, to get me to this point. So she's very detailed and very good. So thank you very much, Michelle. So here I am with the proposal. We're gonna build. Does everybody understand what we want to do as far as the addition, that left side of the building, if you're looking from the street end?
Yes. Why don't you describe it?
Okay. So we're gonna add just over twelve hundred square feet by adding a second floor over the garage on the left-hand side. And we're also, we're also going to square up the building where the, that garage is set back a little bit. It's set back probably, you know, fifteen feet or so, maybe close to the twenty feet. So we want to bring that part of the building out so it's in line with the rest of the building on the right-hand side. So in the end, that building will be a perfect rectangle. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So is, is there any questions about that at all? Okay, great. So in the end, so we all know what I'm trying to do, but now there's some concerns that, conditions and concerns that Michelle rightfully brought up. Did you have a question, Charles?
Um, no, I get, I actually have a few other questions before we get to the concerns.
Yeah, go ahead.
Things like, um, how, if you were to do it, how long would the construction build out? Have you already secured a construction team?
Yep. So I secured an architect at this point. So when I, hopefully if I win this, then I'll hire the architect that'll do, and the structural engineer, and I have both of those, that'll, that'll come up with the drawings that we'll present to the building department once we get to that point. So I thought the step was to make sure that you folks are happy with the conception of what we're trying to do, but we will come up with full-scale architectural, with structural engineers stamps on them.
Right, but the plan that we have, is that not what you're planning to build?
No, what you have is what we're planning to do, but you know, how it's actually gonna be built is, is where we'd have to get that from an architect. It'll look exactly what you're looking at from the outside. But you know, you know, whether it's, you know, wood studs, metal, I'm sure I'm gonna have a metal I-beam down the middle, you know, things like that. That'll, that'll be in the final plans that go to the building department. It'll look just like what you see, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
Normally, we'd have those, and we would make one of the conditions be that it, the, whatever you build matches the plans that you submitted.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That should be part of the conditions, for sure, if, if that's, if that's the case. But yeah, I don't, I don't have those, those plans, those architectural drawings for this meeting.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay. But so how long do you think it would take you to build it?
Um, I think altogether, once, once I submit the plans and get the permits from, from Nelson, I would say it'll take between four and six months.
Okay. Um, I notice in the proposal that there could be a significant change to the occupancy and uses. Can you expand on that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So there's, there's two roads that I can go down with this space. One is I do need to bring some new technology into my, my, my office, including three D. Printing. So we might use this space for three D. Printing. There's some other kind of carving machines and engraving machines I, I need right now. I vend out that work. So we might bring that type of equipment in there. That's, we were mostly probably gonna go, but I'm also well-connected with the movie industry. You've got, you folks had some movies that were filmed here. I did probably a bunch of work on that, that movie. So the movie industry rents roughly about two thousand and twenty-five hundred square feet on a regular basis. If I can get them to rent there, and I would be doing their work, it's such a win-win. So that's why when you see that, what Michelle wrote up, as about, you know, some conflict, I just need to make sure I can solidify that relationship with the movie industry, and they will come into that building, and, and we will do a significant amount of work for them. And they rent for a much higher rate than what I'm getting right now. So it's a, it's a real win for me on multiple fronts.
So it would be, it, it would be substantial enough that you could leave it vacant until the next movie comes along?
Absolutely. Right now, like at the garage, you get about twenty-five hundred dollars of, um, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars a month. So the upstairs, all these second floors, they don't really rent for so much. So maybe after this build-out, if I was gonna rent it out normally, maybe I'd get four thousand dollars a month. The movie industry would pay in excess of eight a month. Yeah, and they're very, um, they really do go from one movie to another to another. I've been working with them for, geez, well over a decade, and we just go boom, 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 right? And they, they rent out of Charlestown. A lot of times, right on that, right next to the Schrapp Center, there's a building right next to them, and a lot of times, they're just right in that building. And it's the same space that I have there, if I build it out. So it's, it's, if I can make that happen, it's gonna be huge for me. And I think it's good for the city as well. I mean, anytime you can have a movie made in your city. I, I've been to, I've testified on Beacon Hill for the movie industry, and I've had, you know, government officials go up while I was testifying and say, what a boom it has been to some of their cities. It is incredible, especially Fall River. Fall River, like, drop dead, and they were so happy. But a lot of these cities are thrilled with that kind of, you know, business coming into their city. And then also, it creates landmarks, you know. You know, if something's been filmed there from the town, from, from any of these movies, then, then some of those become landmarks, city landmarks, and, and it becomes, it sort of adds to some tourist. It'd probably take a little while for Malden, but there's a lot of places around here that people go to see a certain landmark because so-and-so in the movies was there. So, and, and so I don't have that firmed up, and that's why I'm a little wishy-washy to, to Michelle's credit, that, you know, which way would I go? Am I gonna bring technology in for my business? Or can I get to the movie industry and that they will actually rent that space?
So you're, are you able to speak to the hours of operation of the different groups that are within your building right now?
Yeah. So for us, we typically are, are operating from like seven in the morning till about eight o'clock at night. We run pretty much almost two shifts. Um, over with the movie industry, they're pretty much around the same thing. I mean, I deliver, I deliver stuff to them routinely, you know, at six or seven o'clock at night, and they're usually leaving around eight. Now, so let's.
And what are the, um, what are the auto, and auto sales groups doing, you know?
Currently, right now, they're like eight-thirty to five.
Eight-thirty.
The gentleman on the left basically is using that space right now for storage. Um, you know, he's still a little bit of a pain to me, but he's not there that often. The gentleman on the right, uh, he sells used cars, as you folks, he's been around for thirty years in the city, uh, and I think actually at that space for all thirty years. But he, he's been selling cars there for all that time, and he's a regular mechanic. And so he'll go to the auctions, he'll buy these cars, bring them in, and they always need a little fix-up, and then he sells them. He's been doing pretty good. I'm, I've never been associated with so close to a guy that does that. It's an amazing business, but he does well.
And is it typically Monday through Friday for all the businesses operating, or is there any weekend work?
No, particularly him, he's, um, he's typically, he's eight-thirty-five. He's usually out of there before five. I mean, he's getting up there in age, and I don't, I don't see, you know, he, I never see him after five. In fact, usually, he's out at four-thirty. And the guy on the left, he's basically never there. As you guys know, he used to be there all the time. I don't know, there's a big history with that gentleman on the left in that building. What, I don't know how familiar you folks are with him, but I know my friend behind me is very familiar with him. But, you know, he's always been a big problem.
Actually, with both ends of the building?
Oh, with both? Oh, I didn't know about that. I didn't, I didn't know that there was issues on the right side with AutoTech.
And so if you had to estimate, could you go through how many employees are there?
Uh, with my business?
For your business?
Yeah. So my business has ten, and at times eleven. Um, the gentleman on the left has just himself. Uh, the gentleman on the right, which is AutoTech, he has three, him, his sister, and a mechanic. I'm sorry, I have twelve.
You have twelve?
Yeah.
Ten to twelve, or twelve regularly?
Twelve.
Because you mentioned you do two shifts.
Yeah, I just have, two of my employees like to come in. They like to beat the traffic. They're in there around six, six-thirty. Uh, one comes from Bedford, another one comes from Mattapan. So they just come in real early.
Mm-hmm.
And the, and then the last guy that leaves, it's one person. Uh, he runs our flatbed printer, and he finishes up around eight.
And you happen to know offhand how many the movie industry tends to have on staff on site?
Yeah, typically, yeah, no, very good question. It's usually their design team, and, um, and, um, some of the producers might be there, and you're looking at maybe five or, five or six typically, you know, in that type of a, a setup. And they're really just designing things and ordering stuff, quite frankly, that I do most of. Proper kind of stuff.
Um, now, right now, there's about thirty parking spots on the site?
Correct. Yeah.
Of which ten of them are inside?
Correct. Yes.
Would the change in use impact any of those interior parking spaces?
Yeah, the only one that it would, it would change is perhaps the gentleman on the left. Um, so the mechanic, the, and the, the, the garage on the right, that's AutoTech, just so you know. Uh, the garage in the middle, that's me. Uh, we build awnings out of that area. We do car wraps out of that area. Uh, so that won't change. Um, and then the one on the left, uh, that is Arrow Tech, or Arrow Auto, sorry about that. And like I said, he's, he's almost never there. If I see him twice a month, that's a lot. So, um, as far as parking, um, if we change the use there, yes. Um, I think if we build that all the way out, um, if we change the use, yes, we won't be using the parking spaces in there.
On the interior space, if you make an office or something of that nature?
Correct. Yeah.
And the three that you have in your section of floor one?
That will not change.
Is for wrapping cars?
We wrap cars, and we build awnings, and sometimes we park our, our awning truck in there.
Okay. Um, sticking with the parking plan that you submitted, I noticed some cha, some changes. There's, there's no indication of any dumpsters. And when I went by the, the site, there seemed to be dumpster behind the building, and then, um, a couple of them on the left in parking, what appeared to be in parking spaces, or blocking parking spaces.
Yes, that, that, correct. That, that's exactly, you know, we, we used to, we used to put them behind the building, but then that truck that comes in, he really can't make that turn so well, so I wound up having to put it exactly where you see it, seen it. Um, if you look at the, the, the pictures that I, that, that staple documents I gave you, you'll see the dumpster there, just so everybody else knows. And that is, I think, the last page in that document, or the second last page. It is the last page. So that's the dumpster. So we have, there's two dumpsters there. The black one on the right is what we use for recycling. We try to recycle anything we possibly can. And that's why that dumpster's bigger. The other dumpster is just a, a regular dumpster.
So where are you gonna move those if you're use, if you're running the parking up to the fence?
So, so if we do, um, so there's another part of this, this parking plan that we have to talk about. So just, just explain the back of that building for a second. So the back of my building, um, about halfway in the back of my building, so I own about half of that space behind the building. Beyond that half of space that I own is the bike path. That's actually owned by the bike path. So when I first bought the building, that whole area was rat, was weeds and shards of glass. It was just an absolute mess. I was talking to the neighbors. I'm like, what do I do with this? It's not my property. And it, you know, obviously, the people who own the bike path are not gonna jump that fence and clean up that area. So talking to my neighbors, I said, just hire it. We all just tarred it. And, and so we used that space. And, you know, maybe we're not supposed to be using that space, but we do. And, um, and so that compensated for that dumpster. So we were using that space for some of our vehicles, and there's a picture in there of us using that space. I think it's the second last page in that document, you'll see. So we moved the dumpster there, so the truck that picks it up is, it's, uh, it's so much easier, uh, for that truck to pick up the dumpster and not make a mess and have paper all over the place. So he used to pick it up, and he used to angle it and, and try to kick it over, and inevitably, when he picks it up, it's kind of half-assed done, and it was just a mess. So he just asked if we can move it there, and we did. So that whole area, so that, that area that I'm speaking of, that's owned by the, that's owned by the bike path folks, all the way down the bike path, if you're looking out in the back bike path of my building, the residential are using that for gardens, that space, you guys have seen it if you've been on the bike path, and so, and all the businesses have tarred it, or most of them have. They did it all the way to the left. There's a municipal, municipal building way down on Eastern Ave, and they tarred it off and, and using it for parking. So we're all just kind of using that space that's unusable, because nobody's jumping the fence and using it, and nobody, they'd have to trespass on my property in order to get to that space. So in order to keep it clean, we tarred it. And because we tarred it, we use it.
Now, when, when did you purchase this?
I purchased, I actually, I purchased that building in March of two thousand and twenty, the week after they shut down America. So that, that was a blast.
So at the time, was the fence up then?
Oh, yeah.
Because you said you paved it.
I paved it.
You paved it, but the fence was up there?
Yeah, the fence, I don't know how long that fence has been there, but it's been decades.
Okay, and, and no, I, I guess what, when I looked at it, I thought that was all your area.
No, no.
That was being reflected here.
Yeah, in fact, I think, um, the fence line is indicated on, is it where it says "Kane Lake Fence"?
No, I see in gate, yep.
Yep.
No, I, I see that on here, but when I was out there, I, I guess that's what I was trying to reconcile, the fact for.
Right. Why is there that much space back there?
Why is there that much space compared to what you're showing here on the lot?
Yes.
And that makes sense that you're.
Yep. And that was the only way to keep it clean, too. I mean, otherwise, we would have leave it undone, and, you know, whatever.
And you don't anticipate any problems from the Boston and Main Railroad?
I have talked to multiple neighbors about this when I first bought the property. I'm like, and then I tried to contact somebody, because I'd rather just buy it. Um, and I, and I've tried to, um, you know, find the right people. Some people gave me names, and they said, no, it's not us anymore. And then I just stopped looking. But everybody that I've talked to said, Craig, nobody, really, nobody comes down and looks at it. It's just how they put the fence. And I don't know why they put the fence so far back, but they did. And so if I could find a way to buy it, I will buy it.
Okay. Um, I don't know how much luck you'll have with that.
Probably not.
With the right of way, but along the bike path that, based on what we've seen others face. But, um, okay, now, um, the other question that I had, and then anyone else who wants to ask any certainly, um, can weigh in. One of the concerns, I, I have two concerns, basically.
Yeah, sir.
One is the violation of the permit from nine years ago, all the things that are still in violation now.
Yeah.
And the second is just the general parking, what I've been kind of focusing in on.
Yeah.
Depending on how your occupancy evolves.
Yeah.
Right?
Correct.
And if you lose seven spots?
Uh, it'll only be two. The one in the left garage.
Right, but the left garage, but AutoTech, uh, okay, so you're, you're planning on AutoTech staying there?
Well, that's, oh, true that, but, so if, if AutoTech wasn't there, there's two spaces in his garage.
Okay, it's, AutoTech, or the plan says is four.
Uh, the one on the left, I'm sorry about that. The one on the left.
Yeah, Arrow, Arrow Auto is there's.
Arrow, sorry about that. You're right. He has three, and he has one outside. So we would lose those three that's inside that garage if, if we change the use.
If we change the use.
Correct.
God bless you. Okay, I'm, I'm just concerned that if you lost those seven, now, you need anywhere from thirty-six to thirty-nine. If you lost seven of what you have, you're down.
I think again, it's, I think again, it's only the three. Where, where you coming up with the seven? I just want to make sure I know.
If you lost AutoTech.
Uh, not AutoTech. Um, we're talking about the one in the yellow, so.
Right, but what I'm talking about is if you lost AutoTech.
Oh, okay.
If hypothetically.
Oh, I see. If they move out.
If you lost AutoTech for whatever reason, because of the changing dynamics of the building and, and what the different occupancies are.
Yeah.
And you lost three spots from Arrow Auto.
Yeah, yep.
That brings you down to around twenty-three, and you need thirty-six to thirty-nine, depending on what the occupancy is.
Depending on what the occupancy is, right.
Right. So that, that's why I, I've been asking about what the number of employees are.
Right.
Because you, you could potentially, um, use most of, most of your parking that would be remaining.
Right.
For the, for the tenants.
Right. Now, if, if, um, AutoTech on the right-hand side of the building became like I am, where it's one parking spot per thousand square feet, then it's not such of an impact.
Right.
So again, it, it really, really depends. And I'd, I'd have to, at that time, work that out with Nelson.
Right.
And then, and eventually you, um, to, you know, talk that over, and depending on the use that goes in there.
And the only one that you've really talked with is this movie group, or intend to talk with is this movie.
It's really either going to be that, because, so when I, when I first bought the building, you know, you're dealing with the banks. And the banks like profitable buildings. In fact, that's why I'm on the second floor, because it's more profitable as a building to have my business on the second floor paying what I used to pay in Somerville, eleven thousand, eleven thousand dollars a month. That eleven thousand's on the second floor. You would get more than five thousand if it was just office space, right? So that's literally the reason why I'm on the second floor. Otherwise, I would have kicked AutoTech out, and I would have been in his space. So where was I going with that? Um, if, I don't even know where I was going with that. But basically, to, to your point, depending on, um, depending on the use, it would change whether or not.
It would change what your, what your needs are and what your ability.
Oh, I know what's going. So, um, as far as like, um, I, I don't think I would kick a mechanic out, or have him leave me and not put another mechanic in there. I don't know if that's good news or bad news for you, but they pay a higher rent than, than most, most places.
Okay.
So I don't think I would lose that, those parking that's in his place.
Okay. So the other thing that I wanted to ask, it, it's one, uh, some of the main violations in the previous condition.
Yeah.
Is all the unregistered cars that are on the lot.
Right.
I counted twenty cars on the lot.
Yeah.
A lot of them parking in what should be the, a parking aisle and the snow storage area.
Yeah.
Um, it was locked, so I couldn't go in. But from what I was looking at, there were like ten unregistered cars on the AutoTech side.
Did you go out at night?
No, Sunday afternoon.
Oh, Sunday, yeah, it would be locked, yeah.
Yeah, it was locked, and, uh, there were, I counted ten cars, most of which were unregistered. Few of them had the, uh, sales.
Yeah.
Wax on the window and, and some decoration. And then on the other side, on, on the Auto, uh, Arrow Auto side.
Yeah.
And I don't know if they're all related to them.
Right.
There were another ten cars.
Yeah.
And then there were, um, four cars blocking Auto, uh, Arrow Auto.
Right. So I, so that is correct, and that's probably typical of what's there on a daily basis, quite honestly. So that case that you're talking about, I actually, you know, I, again, I bought the building in two thousand and twenty, right? So when I went there, I went to the building department, and I opened up the case file. Uh, I'm a general contractor, so I know some of these, I have some of the ins and outs of how things work a little bit. And I, and I took pictures of a bunch of things. I never saw case number fifteen oh-two until Michelle, you know, sent it to me in her opinion. So I didn't know some of those rules. I knew that we're not supposed to have unregistered cars, but you know, I knew he was fixing them up and selling them. And, um, the guy on the left, Arrow, Arrow Auto, you know, they were in his leased parking spots. So, you know, I, I wasn't hardlining those people. But all of those cars, everything but Arrow Tech's cars moved. They moved. Arrow Tech is, you know, they're in his parking spot, so I, I didn't really become a hardliner on that. But when I bought the building, and this is, this is the difference, is when I bought the building, there was twenty-seven junk cars in there. Junk. And they were all Arrow. Arrow had twenty-seven. You wouldn't even believe it. I counted, I counted those. Um, and because I, I literally almost came to fisticuffs with that guy. It, it had to be a mind-changing with him, because he was owning that building. Uh, he was totally, completely out of control. But there was twenty-seven cars belonging to the, the gentleman on the left. So we, we had a heart-to-heart and many thousands of dollars on my part with a, with a lawyer, and having some really tough talks with that gentleman. And, you know, now he's just down to his, you know, four spots on the left inside the, uh, inside the gate, and what he uses in front of his, uh, in front of his building. And, you know, I didn't push him any further than that, because that, that didn't bother me. He had the right to those leased spaces. I didn't know that that was a problem for the city. I, I would have moved those, too. If you look at my track record and all the things that I've changed in there, and you'll see in that packet that I handed to you, that place was a fire hazard when I bought it. It was a fire hazard. There was people sleeping on the first floor. There was an apartment on the second floor. Um, there, there was fire hazards throughout that building. Um, and you can see some of the pictures. The, um, the, the back of that place was, was all weeds and, and shards of glass. You, you even want to walk in that place. It, it really was horrible. Um, the outside of the building was ugly. Um, and to, you know, and, and to the respect that I have for all of you folks, before I even built, uh, bought that building, I went down to the mayor, and I wanted to have a conversation with him about my type of business, because some cities, I don't know, it's manufacturing. Some cities don't like manufacturing. And then I went to Kevin Duffy, and I went to Mr. Nelson Miller, Miller over here, to make sure, you know, everything was copacetic in what we were gonna do. Now Nelson and I had a heart-to-heart. And he says, Craig, I need you to control the guy on the left. And I did. I did, you know, I did. You know, I mean, you know, we, we, we worked hard, and it cost thousands of dollars to make him conform. That building is clean. If you go to those last two pages, now, Michelle was right. She saw some, you know, when you hear the words trash and debris, you might be thinking cans of food. You might be thinking rolling paper all over the place. I love that building. I pick up paper every single day that happens to blow in there. So that, I didn't do any cleaning on those last two pictures that you see there. It's just that my, a lot of my employees have left. So I stood out there. I went click, and then I went to the back, and I went click, and that was it. Now, she's right, there was an engine block in there. In that first picture, there's a blue car, and you're right, there's an engine block right behind there. That appeared the last few days, and that's my buddy from, from Arrow Auto. So I have to, you know, obviously, it's a problem. I'll get rid of that. Around the corner. Around the corner, there, there's a, a, a group of tires. Those are recycled tires, they're gonna be picked up, they get picked up like once, once every other week or once a month, they get picked up. And then there's some auto parts, uh, pieces of auto parts out there, she's right, they were there. But those are pieces of metal that came off a car, they get recycled too. And then it was talking about a, a car in, in, in front of the garage, so I went down there as soon as I saw that. And I said, do you remember that? He says, yeah, that was the next car that was gonna be fixed, you know, in front of the garage door in the back. We have our personal vehicle, our, that, um, that our, our delivery guy does, and he backs up in front of the door that Michelle brought to your attention. And he opens it up and, and he just packs stuff off and he, and he takes off. Um, but right in front of that door, there's a big cement pad, so it's easy egress, and, and you can't block the door. So it might sound like we're blocking the door, we're not blocking the door. We parked in front of the door area. The door has a big cement pad. So it's not really, and I thought those pictures, the, the last two pictures sort of illustrates really how this place is run. The problem is those cars that you're talking about, but that's an easy fix, because it's not, it's my problem. But I don't, I don't have any feelings towards it, so I don't care. I'll bring four tow trucks out there and tow them all, and I'll tell them where they are. It, it doesn't bother me. Um, but I didn't know that that could be a problem. I was never informed of fifteen oh two. I never knew about it. Maybe it's my fault that I don't know about it, but I didn't know about it. So those conditions, they're valid. They have to be fixed, and I'll fix them.
So what, what's the plan going forward for the tires and the auto parts that are being recycled? Is it to continue to store them in the parking lane?
So they, they, um, they, they're not in a parking lane, because they're right behind, uh, the gentleman on the right-hand side. They're, they're right behind Autotech.
Right, but it, but if they're there, the parking lane behind row, uh, spot nine, if you try to go over and fill the cars in on the right, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, how do you get there if, oh, are, are you, are you?
Which one are you looking?
On the encroachment, on the B and M?
Yeah, good question. So there's a, um, on the, on the, uh, Eastern Ave, uh, there's a fence, there's a cu- a curb cut right there.
So that's how you access those?
That's how they access those.
Okay, and there's three spots, but I counted like four cars and then.
Yeah, yeah.
Cars parking along, and I guess I don't know now whether they were parking on the encroachment of the.
They were.
Uh, easement or?
A little bit of both.
Or what the deal is.
Yeah, a little bit of both.
What, what's the plan for that going forward?
Well, if you guys don't want them, they won't be there. I mean, that's, if they're not allowed, I mean, I have to, I have to conform until we come up with a, a secondary plan that you folks would accept. But, um, there's a lot of land back there, and it'd be a shame not to be able to use it a little bit, especially where I tarred it. But, um, you know, it's, it's easy for us to park back there, it's nice and safe, and there's a ton of space back there, so we use it. Like I said, I, I moved my dumpster over, so it's easy for the truck to pick it up, and we use the space behind my building, you know? Um, you know, it's, it's, it's not bought, nobody can see it, because it's, it's not seen by the street, it, I guess it is seen by the bike path a little bit, but, you know, the, the whole area is clean. The, the, there was not, I walked, I walked, that day, that Michelle was down, I walked around, I didn't even find one piece of paper. The place is clean. You know, we, we run a clean business. I've been in business for thirty-two years. Um, you know, I have no citations from Somerville. I've, you know, I've fixed a lot of problems here. You look at that building before and after. I mean, I was surprised that nobody came down and shook my hand and gave me an award. I mean, it was night and day. Um, I mean, look through those pictures and that staple thing, those are actual pictures that were on my cell phone when I first bought the building. There was a ton more, but I didn't want to bore you. Um, you know, unfortunately, I took the pictures after I already threw out the, the, the mats for people, where people were sleeping, the, not mats, but beds, where people were sleeping, I already, there was, it was, and people, by the way, were spray painting. You guys know this, there was people spray painting, you know, there. That gentleman on the left, he was spray painting cars there. I had to deal with that. I was down there one Sunday and I hear, ts, ts, and I didn't own the property then. So I, I said, I went in there, I'm like, holy Christ, I says, you can't be doing this. I was, blah, 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 blah. I said, listen, I'm gonna be here in about a week and I'm gonna be a different person, because I'm gonna be the owner. It's over.
Now, the people who were sleeping there, were, were they squatters, or were they people that you were renting to and they were using it for an unauthorized use?
So clearly, nobody I was renting for. This is, uh, you know, that ended the day I bought the building, so it had nothing to do with me. Uh, it was people from the gentleman that owns Arrow Auto.
Okay, so it was people who were taking advantage of the situation.
Yeah.
Before you owned it.
It might have been friends, I'm sure it was people that was hard up and whatever. I don't know who they were. And then what, what happened is afterwards, when they, they couldn't sleep in there, there was a guy sleeping in the car for the next two months. You know, what was I gonna do? You know, I, I did close my eyes for that for two, two months, but, you know, people are hard up. It's, it's tough to see. Very tough to see, actually.
Okay, um, that's all I had, uh, at the moment. Did anyone else have anything that they wanted to ask the petitioner? Risa Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, can you talk a little bit about the roof deck that I see in the plans?
Oh, yeah. Well, two things. I do want to, um, um, let you guys know that I have a, uh, solar farm on my property, which I'm very, very proud of, and it's part of, you know, our green initiative, but we have eighty solar panels up there. And eventually, we're gonna have all electric cars, and we'll be plugging our cars in to our roof and getting, getting power, so I can't wait for that. So the, uh, originally, when I bought the building, I wanted the space on the, uh, above the garage to be a place where my employees can go out, get some fresh air, eat, you know, have some sort of a place for them to, to do that. Because I knew eventually I was gonna build on that garage, I, I never did it. So I wanted, uh, it's, it's literally just for my employees to go up there, have a lunch, get out, you know, get out of there. You know, you can't really walk to a store there, or a little restaurant or something like that. Um, five of my employees come not by vehicle, they come from bike, scooter, bus, and two walk. Um, but, um, yeah, it's just, it, it's just something, it's just something I wanted to do for my employees. You know, when you're hiring people, you, they, they look at your place, they look at you, they, you know, they look at whether you're not your old school or new school, or hip or not hip. Well, you have a, you have a place like that, and they go up there, and I say, oh, this is where you can have lunch? Ain't nobody gonna say no to me. So that was where I was going with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Good question.
Okay, anyone else have, uh, questions? Eric McCush.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the dumpsters, so they're currently sitting on the, uh, B and M railroad property.
Technically, yes.
Um, and, but the dumpsters are supposed to be screened in.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
They're supposed to be screened in, they're supposed to be fencing around them?
Yeah, so this, this illustrates part of, part of why, what I'm talking about. So when Michelle sent that, um, her opinion to, to me for this meeting, there was a border health letter, and I believe it was, um, the time was February of two thousand thirteen, if I'm not cor- if I, I believe I'm correct on that. It's in, it's in Michelle's report. And that illustrates the whole problem with that building before I owned it. I mean, people just continually ignored what you folks wanted. I, I've never ignored anything. I never have, and I never will. So I'll screen them. I can build a screen myself. Well, you know, that's what we do. We, we, we weld metal.
On someone else's property?
Well, that could be an issue. I mean, but, you know, no, I mean, we're definitely on that property for sure, absolutely, Eric. Um, but again, they're not coming over and cleaning it either, you know, so, you know, nobody's, you know, they're, they're, they're not doing their part on that property that's behind my building. Um, so yeah, I put my dumpster there.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, Eric, I hope that's okay.
No. Eric Henry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So you mentioned about, uh, uh, the five oh two, uh, fif- I mean fifteen, excuse me, fifteen oh two.
Yes, sir.
Can you expound upon what, on that, what is that?
Yeah, so, uh.
You've never heard about this.
Sorry about that. So it's in Michelle's report, and I believe it starts on page fifteen oh two. I'm sorry, uh, starts on page two in her report.
And Eric, Eric, if it's helpful, I think what it is, is the two thousand fifteen planning board, uh, number two of two thousand fifteen planning board case that we, uh, um, approved a special permit. I think it's in the package.
Yeah, you, you have a copy of that, as well as the most recent decision from twenty seventeen.
Right, thank you very much, but the public doesn't have that, I was just wanted to get.
Right, I, I didn't, I didn't get the whole case. I only, but, but, but the parts that we're, we're bad at, that Michelle, um, um, alluded to, is right in her concern.
Particularly the part you said, you never heard, uh, the, that part about.
No, because I wasn't around here. Um, I, you know, I wasn't even in Moldan at all. Um, so, uh, you know, I didn't know any of the real past history, other than conversations I had with Mr. Miller. Um, and like I said, I did open up the case file, and I did take some pictures of a bunch of stuff in there, but fifteen oh two, I did not see. So I'd never heard of fifteen oh two, quite, quite honestly. I never did until, until I got this, uh, Michelle's report.
Okay. Is the, the parking still, you, you said at one time you had twenty-seven cars parked there, and then you, you took it down to zero on those junk cars. Well, I didn't take them down to zero, because, um, Arrow Auto does have, I would, I would call it six junk cars there, five to six junk cars. Um, so, but I, I, I got, I guess I got rid of twenty-two of them. And, and, you know, the guy that owns Arrow, Arrow Auto, quite frankly, he's just a hoarder. He does have probably, you know, some, a condition that makes him a hoarder. Um, and he just, I, you know, I, I let those go because they were technically his parking spots, so, um, he, he asked me, he says, Craig, you know, you know, like I said, we're yelling at each other.
And he says, Craig, what about these over here? These are my parking spots. I'm like, all right, get the rest of the cars out of here. And that's how that was going down at the time when I bought it.
Okay, one, one quick point, Mr. Chair. So you, you, what deficiency in parking are you claiming to be, uh, four cars or five cars, how many?
Well, when I, when I went by there, I saw more than four unregistered cars on the side of Arrow Auto.
Right, so.
They had three of them blocking their garage entrance alone. Then they had another ten. They had a forklift, they had a motorcycle, um, and they had a few, a few other things. Um, but what, what I'm concerned about is, um, in looking at it, the, um, if they lose the interior space, even if they don't, how are they gonna use those spaces that they're should be using for parking and deliveries and things like that, and they're storing unregistered cars in there?
Okay, I'm, and I'm sure, again, this is a part of the record, but for those who are at home who don't have it, this, is a parking deficiency of, um, he's saying, he's claiming five or six, and we're saying?
I, I counted more than that. I counted ten on the Arrow Auto.
Ten is a number.
Plus the three that were sitting, there were, in the front, there were three. On the plan, it shows it being, um, horizontal to Eastern Avenue, but when I went, there, there was, look, it'd be like a Jag limo, a Mercedes, another Jag, and then a registered car blocking the entrance to the second floor.
Right, so the, so to be clear, on the cars that, so when you, when you count ten, you're right, I didn't think about the motorcycle, I don't really consider it, but you're right, there's a motorcycle there, and there's a forklift. So the first car on that side, right, that, that's a car that Auto, uh, Autotech sells, so he has one spot there. The next, the next four spots, that's Arrow, and in one of the spots, he fits the forklift, sorry, the forklift and the, um, and the motorcycle, and then he's got the other ones for cars, and he's got three cars in the front. So I guess when you count those, it could add, add up to possibly seven. The other cars that are in the back.
Well, now, I'm talking about the ones that are, um, on the side by Arco Welding, that don't have license plates on them.
Those are for, those are for sale. Those are the five cars that the, um, Autotech has a license to sell.
What about the four on the other side, on the easterly side of the building?
Those also are Autotech's.
And Autotech has a license for five.
Right, those, exactly. So I, I never even knew that, again, my fault on that, I didn't know we could only have five cars. I didn't, never knew about this fifteen oh two.
Thank you.
So I didn't know that he was, I didn't, so those are, those are, and if you looked at it, Michelle saw it, uh, he's got the writing on there that says this car's for sale or something like that, and those. So you're right, all of those cars are there, and there's some in the back, those are unregistered, they're gonna be all for sale. But I spoke to Eddie, who owns that property, I says, you just can't do it anymore. So I says, we, we, we're gonna, if you want to do, if you want to have this kind of business, you know, you, you have to go down and you have to do something with your license, but I was just informed that this is the way it is. And I says, I have to run it by the way you agreed to, uh, not me. You know, you agreed to this. It was, it has nothing to do with me. I just have to enforce it.
You took over the property in twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty, Eric.
Okay, and, uh, before that, how long had the property been used in this manner? Do you, maybe the building commission would know, but maybe you would know as well, but how long had the property been used in this manner before?
That I honestly can't answer. I knew of the property, before I bought it, I probably knew of the property, I would, I would estimate about six months uh, before I bought the property. So it was definitely all of that, but when I looked, when I looked in the packet that, um, that they had at the building, there was like fine after fine after fine down there. It, it was a habitual issue.
Okay, so actually, really, um, there is one more point I was interested. You said something about a thousand-foot, uh, impact for parking?
Uh, we're gonna add twelve hundred feet total, uh, just, I think it's twelve thirty-five total to the building. Most of that space is on the second floor, um, over the garage, and then bringing that second floor in line, in line with the front of the building.
And so once again, we're, we're talking, you, you say that's ten, and gentleman says five or six that he controls, other than that, he, it's with the other tenants.
Well, it's, it sounds like Autotech has about, um.
I would say they have about.
At least fifteen, and then Arrow has four to seven, depending on how you count.
But I'm, I'm, when I bought that building, there was twenty-two additional. I, I'm, there was junk cars all over that thing. Now, I, I would say you're correct, if you count fifteen for Autotech, but that's including the five that he has for sale legitimately. And then he's got, you know, he's probably got about another five cars that he's, that he's in, about to fix to sell. So the way his own business goes, and again, this isn't, you know, not my business, it's his business. He goes to a, real quickly, he goes to a framing, um, the auction down there, and he'll bid on three, four, five cars, and he'll get them. It's not worth bringing those cars, and he's gonna have a real problem with this issue.
I get it, I understand, and, and to your point, uh, what I think is, was, is saying is that what he doesn't control, he, he will, if, if you, if we deem it so, he will.
One thousand percent.
Make it happen.
Has no sweat on me whatsoever. No sweat on me whatsoever, everybody.
Anyone else have any questions? Yeah, um, hold on a second, Steph- Stephanie, give me a second here. There you go, Stephanie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm just looking at the proposed parking plan, and there's the thirty spots, and those are parking, but they don't include the display vehicles for sale, so that would be five additional.
No, the, um, so his.
Spaces or?
Yeah, good, good question. His, um, his display area, uh, to what Charles was saying, is on the Arco side of the fence, on the very, very far left. He's got five spots there for display. It's not marked per se that these are display spots. Actually, he can put them, I think, anywhere on the property, but he puts them as close to the outside fence, so people can see it even when the gate's closed. So I, I don't think there was ever a designation, well, his five cars could be here or there. But before I bought it, that was where he always put, and I, I never changed that. So his five spots are pretty much, when you first walk into the fence on the left, pretty much, there's one car on the right, and there's like four spots on the left that he uses. And then to what Charles says, he also incorrectly uses the spots on the right of the building. They can't be unregistered, they could be cars that he's fixing, but they can't be unregistered cars. And he's using that, and we all are using the back of the building. Like I said, I tarred it, so we do all use it.
So, but the back of the building doesn't have spaces on this plan?
Doesn't really have parking spaces, but if you look at that last page, uh, on there, it's, it's a huge space after I tarred the whole thing. So like I said, we moved the dumpster out, so it's easy for them, and quite frankly, we've, we've parked back there, because it's, it's safe and there's tons of room over there. Um, there's really a lot of room back there.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't just add those to the plan to then make up the divisions?
I think I, I technically probably can't, because it's not my property, um, Stephanie, but, um, I, we probably should have added to the plans like directly behind the building. There's three spots that I, there's, there's an area, long area right behind my building on the left side, if you're looking from the street and behind the building right there. You can, we, we, there's, easily, you can have three cars there, and we probably should have. I don't know why it wasn't added before me, so I didn't, I didn't want to, you know, the old, the old parking plan was like that. And, you know, I didn't want to upset the apple cart and cause another problem in front of you folks, but I probably, in hindsight, should have probably added those three spots in as a, as a place to park, because there's plenty of room, you know, that, that I own, and I own that property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Michelle, you had a few questions?
Yes, thank you. Um, first, I just want to mention in response to one of the board members' questions, all these decisions are recorded at the registry, so they go with the deed, so when you purchase the property and you do the title search, these should show up. So, you know, there's no, um, um.
No hidden agenda.
There's no, um, reason that a, a property owner wouldn't see this. This property was before the board, as recent as twenty seventeen. Property owner came in, Autotech came in, they agreed to the. Property owner came in, Autotech came in, they agreed to the five, that's what the city council license was. He stood at the podium and agreed to it. He consented to it, agreed to it, whatever you wanna call it. It was put into your decision. The approved parking plan, which the petitioner was given, showed that. It showed the spaces that were labeled. So that was all approved and agreed to. That wasn't, that wasn't known, or nobody knew. I mean, it, it's public record, and that's why they were labeled. This is also the same plan that the city council license committee received, which is why year after year for the past six years, they've issued a license for five cars. It specifically says five cars for display for sale. So there's no question about that. I verified that, I double-checked that. Because when I went out there and saw all the cars for sale, it's the same tenant that's doing this. The same tenant that stood here and said, yes, I agree to the five. It's not this tenant, it was the other property owner, but it's the same tenant that he leases to. So the tenant is definitely well aware, um, of what his license says, cause he goes every year to the city council to get the license renewed. Yes, it is. It's the same tenant, it's the same person. So, um, that particular, and, and I've raised this to the city council, um, chair of license committee because they're aware of what the license says. So this is, this is in direct, aside from the special apartment, that's in direct violation of the city council license, so. So I wanted to note that. In terms of the encroachment issue, um, Building Commissioner Nelson Miller's here, and he can speak to this. He apparently deals with the T and is given information about all the encroaching properties that have encroachment agreements to use it, use land along Bike to the Sea. As this board knows, petitioners have come forward and had to come back because they proposed to use land on Bike to the Sea. And MBTA said, you can't use that land. There's a Tennessee, I think it's the Tennessee gas line runs along it. They couldn't put bike racks, they couldn't put benches, they couldn't do anything. So I cannot, you know, advise you to think dumpsters, parking, screening, I, I don't think that that is, is necessarily acceptable. I would think you need to see an agreement in writing that says the property can be used that way. It's what the petitioner says, he does not own that property. So I think some sort of agreement, if that's gonna be part of your decision to allow continued use of that. I think it's, it's, it's never that's, I have the pictures that go back to, to probably ten years on this site, and that was never presented as part of using the property, even if they were using it as the property. So that's why it doesn't show up on the plans. They don't own that property. So it's just those couple things for, for reference. But, um, if you wanna, I, I had a question about this movie industry, and exactly what square footage they would occupy and what the use would be called. So, um, if you wanna ask Nelson Miller what that use would be, because again, that determines what the parking is, what the use is. This proposed floor plan says retail and offices and manufacturing. And I'm not sure what this movie industry business is or how it would be classified. It's also not clear, so maybe the petitioner can add. Are you talking about just the first floor, or just the second floor, or possibly first and second floor?
It would be first and second if it went to them.
Okay, so.
They would need with that kind of room.
Nelson Miller can tell us what the classification would be, um, if you wanna hear from him.
Yep, just finished my note. Um, Mr. Miller, can you share with us what you think, uh, the movie use might be?
And also about the encroachments, if you wanna hear about that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It, it sounds like, this is the first I'm hearing of that, that particular use, but it sounds like, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, uh, they're actually using equipment somewhat.
They, they sell equipment with that. They use, they use hot boards and computers.
So they're not.
Excuse me, Mr. Murphy, can you come back to the microphone, and so it can be recorded?
If, thank you. If it is the movie industry, then they, they basically are using hot boards, um, paper and computers. They're, they're doing illustrations and hot boards, uh, to show how the movie's gonna run. No, no, there's no equipment in what they do. No, no like machinery.
So would that be office?
So that changes my, my opinion. I, I thought they, that they would be producing things for movie sets, which would have been a light manufacturing, but it sounds like it's, yeah, it would be an office use.
Okay, that, that, thank you, and until we know more about it and what they're actually doing, that's, I think that satisfies the question. What are your thoughts on the, the using right away? And what's jumping to my mind is less the bread of life who was using some of it, and some of the parking down behind Floramos.
Yep.
But what jumped to my mind first was, um, around the corner, um, a few months ago, when we had National Grid in, and we had all that encroachment on the National Grid site, and the problems that created for the others.
Yeah, that's a good point. Uh, and it's a little bit different because National Grid wasn't willing to put together, or they didn't wanna put together encroachment agreements. They just wanted to let people use their property. The T is the exact opposite of that. There is, uh, attorneys that work for the T. There's a woman named Pat Fitzgibbon that I've been communicating with for years. And, uh, they do actually write encroachment or use agreements with properties that abut the, the, the MBTA property. And they do this up and down the East Coast. So, little fun fact for you, there, there are more encroachments on, on the rail, railroad property in Malden, Massachusetts than the rest of the East Coast combined. Which is surprising. And some of those encroachments are small, and some of those encroachments are buildings and pools and all kinds of stuff. So, uh, they do, they do write them, uh, as you mentioned, Floramos, you know, they've, they've had one for years. Joe's Welding, if you drive by Joe's Welding, they have trucks to the left of the, of their building. That's actually land that they lease from the T to store stuff. So, I can't speak to this one in particular as to if, if they would write an agreement or what that would look like, or what they, if they would allow a dumpster or fence, uh, but it's certainly.
But there's an opportunity.
There's certainly an opportunity, yep. And it's the T's preference. They, they would prefer to allow people to keep on using the property and get paid to do it, than to take it back and do nothing with it.
Right. Does anyone else have any questions from Mr. Miller? On the encroachment or on the, uh, use of the movie, movie industry?
Someone did somewhere about this one thousand-foot parking. Did I mishear that or something, or did you already?
I'm sorry, well, I didn't hear the question.
Sir, please, thank you.
So Eric, I, I remember you talking about this before, but I, I didn't know what you were talking about.
Okay, okay.
Terms, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll let it go.
All right, I'm sorry, Eric.
And, and with that, sir, I, I'll yield.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Miller, thank you very much, appreciate it. Kenny Antonucci.
This is kind of, uh, Mr. Miller, in your experience, I'm sorry, before you walked away. Uh, actually, for both of you. The, um, it's my understanding about the MBTA agreements, basically, as long as it's not something permanent, you can usually put it there. Now, I'm surprised, you know, even the fencing, cause different properties, like you know, do have chain link fencing or enclosures or whatever, uh, you know, as long as it's not above the, the Tennessee gas main, or if it's, you can't build a building, they can't put a retaining wall. But it sounds like it would be possible to get permission for the parking and maybe even the, the, the rollaway dumpsters. Not sure about the fencing enclosure. So that was, is that kind of, that's, that's your understanding?
Yeah, you certainly, they won't let you put a building or dig a foundation in the ground. Uh, there are two sets of gas lines that parallel the bike path. There's a high Tennessee gas, high pressure on one side, there's a National Grid high pressure on the other side. And in certain areas, they cross each other, so it gets real interesting. As far as a permanent structure, uh, the deck behind what used to be the dockside, that's a permanent structure, and that's on top of that easement. So, there is some yin and yang to be had as far as what they would allow to put there. It seems like a dumpster would probably be okay. Uh, sinking poles in the ground could get tricky.
Yeah, especially with utility locations or whatever, right?
Right.
So, so I guess my question then dovetails off to you, uh.
So, when I realized I had to do the screening, um, you know, we, we build things, and we, we build a lot of awnings, and they're made out of metal. All of my tables that I always make are on wheels, because I like to move stuff around. You know, sometimes we've got big pallets of paper, I gotta move the table out of the way or whatever. So everything we build, you know, for us is on wheels. We've already started planning on building screens, and, and they're gonna be on wheels. So when the guy comes, he's just gonna wheel it off. And we're not gonna have gates that open, the whole, the whole three-sided structure's just gonna wheel it, get it out of the way. The wheels are big casters, they're, they're really good. So, that's how we were planning on doing. I didn't know about this situation, but I just tired that thing. I'm not, I'm not putting holes in that tower. So, so we, so, you know, to, to your point, everything is gonna be movable. Everything's gonna be on wheels. My screens will be on wheels.
Is a movable screening acceptable?
Again, I.
Usually it's just two gates.
Yeah, I'm not ready to answer questions for the T.
Well, no, I'm thinking as far as the city, as far as what we would care about.
From what we've seen, from what we've seen in other locations, things that are movable are, have not been an issue.
Well, I'm not talking about per the T, I'm talking about for us to meet our screening requirement.
Oh, for screening, yeah. I don't think the, the ordinance is so specific as to say it has to be mounted to the ground. I think the purpose of the screening is so no one has to look at it. So I think as long as it was something that was sturdy enough and stayed in good condition and, and, you know, kept people from staring at the dumpster, then I, I would have no problem with that.
Okay. And then, uh, I guess, so it dovetails back to you. Um, I mean, it sounds like you weren't aware that you have the possibility of approaching the T.
One hundred percent not, no.
So, that is something that you'd be willing to do?
Oh, I was very happy to hear this.
Okay, all right.
I do want to respond to Michelle, um, when she was talking about, you know, the ordinance of, ordinance of fifteen oh two. You know, I, you know, I, I, I saw it or didn't see it or whatever, you know, because it's in the registry of deeds. I'm sure that is. If you know the registry of deeds, and I have folks, friends of mine who work up there, they're so behind, they are a decade behind. So whether or not they're, they're accessible for somebody to look at, I don't know. It's not, um, it's not the owner that goes up to, to check on the deed, whether or not it's a clean deed or not. It's a lawyer that goes up and did it there. I can't tell you if that was there or not for him to see, but it was never brought to me. So I've never seen that fifteen oh two. Um, I just didn't have any knowledge of it. I do now, and like I said, this stuff has no sweat on my back. My, my, I'm, I'm running a business. I'm here to run a clean show, make money. Um, you know, I invest in Malden. Um, I pay ten thousand dollars more tax a year than the person who owned it before me. I'm up to date on my taxes. I, I've never been delinquent. I'm a good, good guy in front of you. You know, I'm a good guy. I just don't hurt anybody. I, I remember when I first moved there, the Thomas Owens Arco Welding, he says, I am so happy you bought this building. I mean, every, I've gotten so many compliments on, on the design of that front of the building. I just wish I got something from, 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 from them. Do you know why I, I put, I was able to put that, um, that design there? Cause I had a conversation with the mayor, and he asked me if I'm gonna do a mural. And if you know, if you know me, I love color, and I was like, yes. And so that's why we did that. It's great. I love Malden. I'm a hair and vest in Malden.
Very good, that's exciting to hear. Uh, Ken, are you all set?
I'm good.
Michelle, you had?
Yeah, I just had a couple more questions. So in terms of all the cars that are behind the building, I saw your truck. So you don't have a parking spot in any of the lots or the line spaces? There's no place for you to park?
Are you talking about my truck?
Yes, this says CRG.
Yeah, you can go in.
I have pictures of it. We, the board has pictures of my visit from the Monday, so everything's documented, yeah.
The truck would have to go in the garage.
Okay. It would go inside your garage?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, what about the other items behind there? It looked like a grill, a table. Is work being done out back by Autotech or one of the other? There was more than just a rack of tires. There was a whole lineup of different things. There were bins, it was a small dumpster, it looked like a covered grill, some sort of platform machine. What, what's all that about? And it's folding tables, what goes on back there?
What goes on? So once in a great while, um, we will, at the end of, especially a Friday or something like that, and this happens maybe a half a dozen times a year, especially more like in the very early, early fall, not so much in the summer, and maybe, uh, late spring or whatever, you know, we'll, we'll have, you know, we'll cook burgers back there. And there's a small fire pit that we use, that's what's in that covered, that cover thing. There is a tire, and all of this space, that stuff that you're talking about occupies a very, very small area in total to what the, what the huge size of that parking lot is. So, dimensionally, we're not talking about a lot, a big issue. But, and you can see the pictures that she, she provided, cause I seen it myself. I didn't see her pictures, but I, I, I live there. There's a tire rack, there's a, there's a small box of, of auto parts there that, again, they have to be recycled. There's a guy who picks up the metal once in a while. The tires are all recycled. Somebody picks up the tires once in a while. Um, so it's all kind of recycling things. There was something, what else, what else did you say was there?
Well, the question, the question I have is, you're, you're talking about it as if it's a, a space that's more than nine feet, when the fact is you really only own nine feet of space back there.
Correct.
The majority of it's supposed to be for snow storage, but all this other stuff's back there. So, I understand you're mentioning, is it if you own another, whatever, twenty feet to the Bike to the Sea? But it's really.
I, I brought that up, I brought that up early in this meeting. You know, I talked about the space that I own.
Right.
You know, in there, so I know, I know exactly what I own.
It's a narrow space. What about the, the debris that's out front? And there is debris, there was plywood, looked like a pink costume, hats, out in front of Arrow. There was debris between the unregistered cars or wrecks, whatever you wanna call them, waiting repair, in the building. What's going on with that, that debris?
Where, where again, was that, Michelle, I'm sorry?
Um, between Arrow.
Yeah.
So on the left.
On the left, yeah.
And those other cars.
Those, yep.
That are parked. There's plywood, they look like costumes and some other trash thrown. What, what is, what's going on with that?
If there is, we'd just simply throw it out.
Yeah, okay.
Cause there's, there's also an engine hoist there behind the Jag limo. A red engine hoist.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, I'll make sure that goes inside his garage, yeah.
So, on that note, I just had one last question. So, do you think because Autotech, you know, has ten spaces for display, has five to seven cars in the back, unregistered, do they not have, and then inside they have another four spaces, do they not have enough room to operate? It seems like there's an awful lot.
Yeah.
Going on there. Even if you say you can't do it, how are they, do they need all that space to run their business? Or what is your?
Well, there's, there's two parts to this, right? One is he has an agreement with you folks. So I own the building, it's up to me to have him force it, and that's what I have to do. So, it's technically not my problem, it's his agreement. You know, he has to, he has to abide by the agreement that he made with you folks or change it. And, and I might come and help him change that, because it's, it's probably not enough, Michelle, for him. Because what happens, he always has five cars for sale, and he's always bringing in five or six cars from the auction. You can't bring one at a time, it's not profitable. So you have to bring in five or six cars, and then you fix them, and those cars are being sold, and then he puts those on the lot. So it's a constant revolving cars. And the ones he brings in from the auction, they're obviously unregistered, and that causes a problem. Sometimes there's seven cars that come in at a time. So it's a real problem for his business. It's definitely gonna impact the profitability of his business. But again, that's not, it's, it's not, it's, I'm gonna feel bad. You know, I, I told him just today, I saw him, and I says, I didn't know me coming to do what I'm doing is gonna impact your business so, so much. I says, but I'm sorry, I, I'm gonna lay some, some rules down here that you're not gonna like. And, you know, he knows it, it is what it is. Um, the rules spell out what it is. I, I don't, you know, I, I think, I think we're gonna wind up coming back here and see if we can amend those rules, but until they are, we, we have to abide by them. I don't think there's, I don't think there's any other choice, unless, you know, you, you say, listen, if I don't hear any problems, then, then we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna be hardliners on us, but, you know, he can't, he just.
He did come back, that's the twenty seventeen decision. He came back and asked. He came back and asked for more, and the city councilors, ward councilors, councils at large, spoke in opposition. The board denied the permit. He, he did not get permission to expand his business, but he did expand the business. But I just wanted, just the last thing I'll say, Mr. Chair, is for the record, the special permit runs with the property. So, it is his, technically his agreement, his license, but all the conditions run with the property. So you're responsible for that.
Fully understand that, Michelle.
Okay, thanks.
And I, and I, and I did when I bought that, and anything I, I knew about, I took care right away. Again, if you look at what that building looks like now, and you look at what it looked like before, and if you look at the sheets that I gave you, and you look at the weeds and the shards of glass, and you, and you look at the, just twenty-seven junk cars, you're looking at a guy that solves these problems. If he knows about them, they're gonna be fixed. And like I said, it's not like I'm gonna cry here because, you know, because he's not abiding by what you wanted him to do. You know, it's up to me to lay down the law, and that's what it's gonna be. And I did it, and I did it. Whenever I knew of something, I took care of it right away. I, I'm not, I'm not in, I am not in bad standing with you folks for anything that I've ever been told about. I'm not. Before, that other owner had a letter from two thousand thirteen about screening, and the screening never happened. That's not Craig. You've got Craig. That's not Craig, you've got Craig in front of you, you don't have the past history. And that's why I just wanna keep saying that when you, when you take everything in context, well, take it in the context of who you have in front of you. It's a, it's a problem solver. You, you have a problem, I solve it. I mean, these are easy, because again, it's no sweat off me, these are his problems. I'll enforce it, it won't happen. I, I'm not here to, to be fined or to be penalized or have a bad reputation. Remember the first thing I did before buying that building? I met with the mayor, I met with Kevin Duffy, and I met with this gentleman over here before I bought the building, because I understand the respect you have to have for the government. And I do. Plain and simple. You can't mess with you guys, you're too powerful. So I'm here to abide by what you say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that has a, uh, any questions for the petitioner? No other questions for the petitioner? I'm just think, I'm just thinking through here.
Yeah, thank you.
What I have, what, what I would like to see happen-
Yes, sir.
Is the, all the unregistered cars move, all the trash and all the engines and forklifts or whatever be either be put inside or, um, something be done with those. I'd also like to see, um, so, uh, an attempt be made, um, to see how, uh, if you can get an agreement with the T.
Yes.
You know, um, you know, uh, before I feel comfortable, and Eric, I'll get to you in a moment, before I, uh, feel comfortable, um, you know, moving forward on the, on the rest of it.
Yeah.
Um, you've certainly done a lot there.
Thank you.
Um, the building looks wonderful. You know, the, the markups that you did all look nice and, and, and all that stuff, so you're to be commended for that.
Thank you so much.
But, but I'd like to see, uh, the two biggest things is clean up the unregistered and try to get a, um, an agreement with the T.
I like that.
Now, I don't know how long it takes to do something like that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I don't know if we're talking about a, a two-month issue or, you know, I, I would like to think it's quicker than-
Yeah.
Than two years, but I, I, I don't know what that, uh, I can't speak of having that type of, uh, experience. But that, that, that's what I would like to see before we move forward on the expansion. You know, I mean, Auto, uh, Arrow Auto seems to be a problem.
Yeah.
That, that you're gonna need to buckle down on. Uh, AutoTech seems to be a different type of problem.
Yeah.
If, if the nature of their business is that bringing in ten works in progress, they have five or six that are ready to be sold.
Yeah.
That's a fifteen spot.
Right. And that's the nature of his business.
It, it, that's a fifteen-spot issue and what that doesn't do, they, they're permitted for five unregistered vehicles.
Right.
You know, um-
Right.
And I, I'd have to yield to Michelle, um, what changes we'd need to make, because now would be the time to-
Yeah.
As a part of this new-
Yeah.
-special permit would be the time to address if, if that other ten units were, were gonna be part of it.
Yeah.
Um, but that, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Before we move forward and cer- certainly not wanting to deny it, but give an opportunity-
Oh, you're so nice.
-to resolve some of these, uh, concerns.
Yeah.
And, and the, the big ones are getting the unregistered cars-
Sure.
Um, under control.
Yeah.
Cleaning it up and then trying to secure something for the use of that portion of the right of way that you're, uh, that you've currently used.
Yeah.
I don't know how they're gonna take to the fact that, um, it was paved upon, but, um, I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask them why they didn't clean it up, not why they did.
Those, those are just my thoughts that I just wanted to share. Eric Henry?
Uh, thank you again, Mr. Chair. Also learned that when, when someone tells me something that starts with, you know, I, I am not, I'm not the problem, you have my attention.
Yeah, well, I, I am, I, I stay that, forgive you, sorry, sir, I am, I am the solver of the problem. Yeah, I will solve it.
God loves engineers, I tell you.
I hear you, though.
Ah, yeah.
I hear you.
So I, I, I think that, uh, you know, again, in, in keeping with AutoTech, actually, honestly, in my opinion, you've brought the lighter part of government that's kind of been passed along a little bit, if you will. The gentleman's, the tenant has been, well, the tenant has been before the board and forced it all numerous times and has, has taken no action and now we're, we're requiring another private citizen to do what we, well,
Yeah.
some entity may have, may have also already done. He has no problem doing it, but-
Yeah. His, his business model is, is, it's a problem and that's why, um, it's not right. Um, but that's why he really wasn't conforming, because when I talked to him today, he explained it all to me. It's, it, the business model doesn't work unless you can't go to Framium in an auction and spend half, over half a day down there and bring back one car, because he just sold one, so he can't bring back one, work on it and then replace it out in the lot where he's got five spots. He has to bring back five cars.
Which, which brings the question, to the question to Michelle, how, how long do you have knowledge? Do you think this, this type of business of, of transaction has been transpiring there?
I think, um, when it came to the board in two thousand seventeen, he, prior to that, and this is based on what's in the decision, prior to that, he had already been using it for more and had gone to the city council and obtained a license for more and the city council didn't realize it was in violation of the special permit. They removed that, sent him back here to see if he could get it amended, which he did not get it amended. This board, I believe it was, um, almost a unanimous vote. And he, he was trying to get permission for twenty-three, I believe it was, twenty-three vehicles. At the time, you know, the board saw as many, according to the decision, as many as forty vehicles observed on site. Not just for him, for the whole business. So there were many unregistered vehicles, backhoes, boats, routine, vehicles routinely observed blocking garage doors, driveways. That was all in violation of conditions of your previous special permit.
Oh, that type of equipment still there?
Yeah. I'm sorry, no, all that is not still there, different things are there now. Some different things. Although I'm not convinced that there's not one of those cars that's still the same car. I was trying to find my old pictures. But it's, it's, it's always, and I said that to, to Mr.-
Murphy.
Petitioner, Mr. Murphy. When I saw him, this has been a problem site. So this isn't, it's, he bought it a few years ago, I, I believe it was a problem when he bought it. I, if I had to guess, maybe this petitioner complied temporarily with the board's decision, so he could get, um, I don't even know, he probably didn't need to get an occupancy permit, you, you denied it. So I think he maybe just continued on doing what he wanted to do, if I had to guess. I don't know how long it's been going on. I was, when a petitioner comes in asking to do something to the property is when we go out and, and, you know, look into the property. I don't have enforcement authority for that, so-
Well, I mean, you, you, you may have some experience as a Maldonian itself, how long that, that, that property has been?
I think there's been issues at that property for quite a while. Uh, according to documents we heard as recent as two thousand seventeen. Um, I noticed the building had been painted, you know, everybody did. I wa, I wasn't aware, it was a different owner, I don't follow that type of thing, so, um-
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I don't know if that helps you or, or what, but, um-
It does indeed, thank you.
So, uh, if I can, if I can elaborate on that, so I, when I talked to, Eddie is the one who owns that, so you folks, some of you folks know Eddie. Apparently, I talked to him and he said, prior, he used to have, I guess, a twenty-car license. And, uh, yeah, and I, and I, and I saw, when I bought the building, I saw a picture of a boat. And I, um, I Googled, went on Google Maps, I saw that there was a picture of the boat. So while I was there, there was no boat, there was none of those things on there. Eddie does run a clean show, whether you like him or not. I'm telling you, he's, he's helped me immensely. My part of knowing Eddie, he's helped me with that building so much. He has a, one of his guys-
How long has Eddie been there?
He's been there for, he should have bought the building, he's been there for thirty years.
That's what I wanted.
Yeah. He used to be a, a big in Hyundai cars, apparently.
And Eddie, Eddie, Eddie does AutoTech?
Yeah, he's AutoTech.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's been, he's been around for quite a while and, uh-
So he's been doing this for thirty years?
Thirty years. And from, from the day I've owned that, he's been nothing but helpful for me. Every time I've asked, he, he knows everything about the building. So every time I've asked him a question about the building, he's helped. He's got a, um, a worker in there named Charlie. He routinely has Charlie go out there and clean up the lot. He, and, and Charlie does the landscaping in front of the building, which it never was. Not that it's beautiful, but it's better than what it was. So Eddie's been, been a hero to me personally. You folks know him as something different, but I can tell you, his business model does not work with five, five cars. It just doesn't, it can't work that way. And that's why it's been such a struggle for him. It's, it's not right, because he's been, he's been not right with the board, so that puts everybody in a situation that building that shouldn't be.
So what do you think his sweet spot is?
I think twelve. I think, I think twelve is a simple license.
So you think we've injured Eddie in our, our deliberations in the past?
Yeah. If it was twelve, he would be fine. Cause he can bring five cars, he can bring five to seven cars in and he can sell five. And in, in our, in, on the business plan, I mean, on the parking thing, I think there's a solid twelve spots for him too. He's got three along the side, four inside, seven and five in the gate, so there's twelve. So, you know, twelve is a good spot for him. And it's a good spot for the building.
Thank you, IU.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, Kenny Tanucci?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, is it, uh, an appropriate time to make a motion? Or do we need to continue through?
We've got some letters that need to be read.
That's what I'm, so we need to go through that process.
We should finish the, the hearing and then, um, go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for anyone, from anyone? Is there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Murphy?
No, but I guess, um, I, um, Chairman, I, I, I do agree with you. Quite frankly, that, I mean, as much as I really, really, really need your, your, your folks' approval today, so I can, I mean, I'm going to fix those issues regardless of what happens here, um, cause I, I've been told about them. I really do need to move ahead with the addition, but I also can't afford six no's. And Michelle let me know that there's a letter in there that's one no. So I can't afford five out of you folks and I don't know how you're gonna vote. And then if I, you vote no against me, then I, I guess I can't come up here for two years. And I'm trying to make money, I'm a businessman, that's who I am. But, you know, I'm a clean guy. You know, we run, I mean, you saw before and after, so I mean, you have to judge me on what I did to this. That property was a, was a crap hole, if I can say that. And it was a, it was an eyesore to the community, it was an eyesore to Malden, and it just wasn't right. And if you go back to what Michelle wrote, this addition is not a detriment to the community. So what I'm asking for isn't a problem to the community or to the surrounding area. We just have some issues here, that if you put in context of before and after, before Craig and after Craig, you know, this isn't that big of a deal, but I can't afford five more no's.
Right, and, and just to clarify-
Yes, sir.
Um, I believe you might be referring to someone who, uh, submitted a letter in opposition to this going?
Correct.
That doesn't count as one of the six no's?
Okay, good. Just-
Right, yeah, it's, it's- You need six affirmative votes to grant. You could deny with five. So, you know, that's a different thing. Yes, this is, the chair's trying to say no votes have been cast.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you.
So we, we haven't done that yet.
Yeah.
But is there anything else that you'd like to share with, uh, with the board?
So I guess, um, I'm, I'm just not sure, you know, trying to read you folks on where any one of you are going to be at. I, I know the safe thing is to ask, you know, for me to, to walk away with no vote and, and go down the path exactly what the chairman said. That would certainly be the safe thing to do. But if, if, like you said, I don't know how long that's gonna take. I know how long it's gonna take me to, to do the issues that Michelle brought up, but I don't know how long it's gonna take for me to contact the folks over at the rail and get that, get that a butters thing. So I'm, I'm kind of in a, you know, quandary here in exactly what to do. And I don't know if, if people can give me guidance here, but if you can't give me guidance, then I have to walk away with no vote and then, uh, and go down the road that you recommend.
That's what I would recommend. We still have more of the hearing to, to do, we have to see if anyone, and-
Sure.
The, the room is empty with the exception of Mr. Miller. Um, and we did, I, I believe we've only received one-
Yes.
-letter. So at that point, once we finish that portion of the hearing-
Yeah.
Uh, there would be a motion, um, made.
Yeah.
I can't make the motion.
Okay, you do your deliberations and discuss-
Right.
-different options, et cetera, and then do your motion as well.
And then we would go from there. We have to do the hea, conduct the hearing.
Okay.
Deliberations first before we make a motion.
Well, if there's, if people have comments, um, it looks like you're ready to make a motion, but I don't know if the other people, um, want to make any comments or want to weigh in or ask any questions.
You do need to finish the hearing, Chair, that's correct.
So if you don't have any more-
I do not.
Um, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
At this point, I, thank you, and you can have a seat.
Okay.
At this point, I'd like to ask if there's anyone that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone in favor? Michelle, do you have anything to read, or Diane, do you have anything to read in favor?
No.
No?
And you said, could you read?
I can.
Okay.
And-
I saw the mask, I didn't-
I will ask again if there's anyone that would like to speak in favor. Seeing and hearing none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anything to read in opposition?
Yes.
Hold on a second, let me-
A letter dated March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It says, Dear Chairman Iovin and Members of the Malden Planning Board, please accept my apology for not attending tonight's meeting of the Malden Planning Board, as I have an unexpected commitment that needs my immediate attention. However, this correspondence is sent to you on behalf of the petition before you for the planning board at twelve thirty-six Eastern Avenue. As the Ward Eight Counselor at this time, I am in opposition of the proposal to construction addition to the existing building at twelve thirty-six Eastern Avenue based on the current violations that the planning board report and recommendations have highlighted. Thank you for allowing my comments, very truly yours, Jadeen, Jadeen Sika, Counselor, Ward Eight.
Thank you, Diane, and I presume there's no, nothing more to be read in opposition? And I'll ask, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing and hearing none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anything to read in general, Michelle?
No.
Okay. So at this point in time, Michelle, if you could take us through your staff report and recommendation?
So this, I'm reading from the planning report, planning report and recommendation, March, dated March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. I won't read verbatim into the record, but it's incorporated here and by reference into the record regarding twelve thirty-six Eastern Avenue and the special permit petition filed in permit application zero six, CMID zero six two three five two dash twenty twenty-three. We've heard about the property, the location, I've given you the breakdown of the existing square footage and tenants, which was indicated on the plan and provided by the petitioner, locations, types of business, square footage, and then also the proposed, um, same type of business, location, square footage. Um, I've noted here, the AutoTech two has a current used car dealer's license too. Again, we've discussed this issued for five cars. I've itemized the plans and information submitted with the petition, I won't read that, it's all here listed. The property is located in the industrial one zoning district, manufacturing use is allowed by right and motor vehicle repair shop use is allowed by special permit in this district. Property is a subject of special permits granted in cases ninety-one dash seventeen, thirteen oh four, fifteen oh two attached, which allows the current use of the property and legalized use of the property in violation of conditions of the prior special permits. There was a proposal, we talked about, to amend the special permit to expand the accessory retail vehicle sales to allow ten as a print, and allowed as a principal use that was denied by this board in case seventeen oh five. You have a copy of that attached. I will note that when I talked about the proposed uses, based on what the petitioner indicated on the plans, the addition may be used for offices, manufacturing or motor vehicle repair shop. And that's the first floor part of the addition, which is approximately two hundred twenty square feet. And then the second floor addition, thirteen hundred square feet, would be used for possibly manufacturing, retail or offices. The public multimodal recreational trail by to the Seapath Northern Strand Community Trail is located on the abandoned railroad right of way which abuts to the north. On the other side is the residence B zoning district with multifamily residential dwellings. Direct abut is to the east of retail sales in conjunction with onsite manufacturing, to the west, manufacturing and warehouse, to the south on the other side of Eastern Ave Cemetery. Surrounding land uses are industrial business and residential. The building on the subject property is pre-existing non-conforming. It was constructed around nineteen forty-six with the second floor addition constructed in nineteen eighty-nine by special permit. It violates substantial controls for law, area front yard setback, one side yard setback. The proposal maintains the existing non-conformities. It creates no new violations. Terms of parking requirements, giving you this breakdown, and again, this was based on the information I had and what was shown on the plans submitted with the petition. So a total of thirty-three parking spaces are required for the current use of the property. Thirty-six, so the existing building, thirty-six to thirty-nine would be required for the proposal. There were different parking requirements, as this board knows, depending on whether it's manufacturing use, an office use or a retail use. So I've given you that breakdown here. And that's why there's a range. We're not sure who's going to occupy the building. So, or excuse me, the addition, so I wasn't, we couldn't definitively calculate how much parking. It could be, as I noted here, an additional three to six spaces. The proposed site plan depicts a parking lot with thirty parking spaces, twenty exterior spaces and ten interior spaces. I will note that interior spaces used as workspace do not counter parking requirements. It's not clear based on this plan if any of those would be ruled out for that reason. I'm not sure about, um, in particular, the spaces that are in the left-hand bay. I'm not sure if any of those are used for, um, repairs or, or what. Or honestly, I don't, I don't, can't say anything about the other motor vehicle repair shop either. And it does sound like the petitioner uses at least one parking space inside to do these coverings. So I guess that would be counted as workspace as well. So I, I will note, um, I, I don't, I'm not sure about this parking plan. I, the, the parking plan isn't, the parking isn't being used in accordance with the approved plan, which you have a copy of and which the petitioner also provided. And, um, would think that you would want to get more information about the proposed parking plan in terms of which are actually used as workspaces. So it wouldn't count towards the parking, which, um, also are being assigned to which tenant, which if a car, sales, et cetera. So that you can have a better sense of exactly how many parking spaces this proposal would provide. But there is an existing parking deficiency and the proposal will exacerbate that. Based on the number of cars I saw at the site, it seems like there's an even greater issue with the parking and parking deficiencies, especially if the majority, it sounds like, of the extra cars, I'll call them unregistered, as well as vehicles parked that were registered, aren't even on the petitioner's property. So I think there's a, there's a parking, a greater parking deficiency than that's indicated in this plan. Uh, excuse me, that's indicated in this report. Um, the parking is currently, excuse me, the property is currently being used in violation of current zoning, specifically special permit granted in case fifteen oh two, including condition three, no overnight outside parking of unregistered vehicles awaiting repair. Outside display and storage unregistered vehicles for sales limited to a maximum of five cars and must be in compliance with the city license. Condition four, no outside storage of any materials or unregistered equipment onsite. Condition five, maintain property clean and clear trash and debris. Condition seven, parking layout shall be as per plan, due to November twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, which shall be submitted to the city council for the vehicle sales license. That's the plan you have in your package listed as existing plan. Condition eleven, compliance with the Board of Health regarding screening of dumpsters. That is a letter, uh, that the Board of Health submitted back in two thousand thirteen to this board. One of the conditions was requiring screening of dumpsters. During a site visit, um, Monday, this is what was observed, ten unregistered vehicles on display for sale, nine parked or stored inside, some possibly seemed to be awaiting repair. Some might have been awaiting sale. It wasn't clear. Various materials we already talked about, unregistered equipment, trash and debris, parking not in accordance with approved layout. There were the registered cars parked at the back of the building, which again, we now know weren't even necessarily on the property, but they were there. Parking, blocking the garage door, parking, blocking the front door. Three dumpsters unscreened, two of which are located in the parking aisle. Were, thought were located in the parking aisle. Apparently they're located on the MBTA right of way. Finding required to grant the special permit, you would need to make this finding that the proposal is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Do you want me to?
Yes, please.
So this recommendation was made prior to the public hearing and provided the board does not make the required finding. The recommendation is to deny a special permit because the property is currently being used in violation of current zoning, special permit case fifteen oh two, city council license three ninety-three or twenty-three, and because the proposal would exacerbate existing parking deficiencies and an existing use of the overuse of the property.
Thank you, Michelle. Does anyone have any questions from Michelle? Stephanie.
Can I ask about the, when you have a car dealer's license, what, what comes first? Like if they wanted to increase that amount of spaces that they get or cars that they can put on display? Would that go through a special permit or through the license or, like, how does that work?
Well, in this particular case, if there, if there was no special permit, it would, they would just go to the license committee. The license committee and building commissioner Miller works with the license committee is supposed to check with the building commissioner and the city to make sure the license would be in accordance with zoning. So that it's allowed, that use is allowed, that there aren't any restrictions, for example, a special permit, et cetera. So that's my understanding of how the process would work. What happened last time is he went to the city council, they, I believe, tabled it and allowed him the chance to come here to seek the amendment. I believe that's what happened. Am I confusing that with one Eastern Ave? Um, the same thing happened on that last one on one sixty Eastern Ave, remember? He went for the license because he was only supposed to do display instead of sales. So they tabled it and then he came in to try to amend the special permit, then went back to get the license amended. This one's a little, um, I guess they're all a little different. Right now, the conditions of the special permit are binding. So as the chair mentioned, or somebody mentioned now, might be the time if you wanted to change any of them. You can't change what the license says. So if you, for example, remove that condition, um, with the num-, the limit, he would, they would still have to go back to the city council license committee to get the license amended. Any changes you make will get forwarded on to them, et cetera. I think some of these conditions, I will say, in that last special permit had to do with the building construction contracting use that was there. There was a wholesale and distribution use that was there. I don't know if any of you recall that. There was other businesses at the property. It wasn't just the car dealer and a manufacturer. So there was other, other things going on and, and there was a storage. I guess the building construction contractor had a lot of unregistered equipment stored there. So there were other things going on. But so that's my understanding of the process unless Nelson Miller wants to add anything differently. I think it would go to the license committee first and then they would defer to, back to the zoning.
The question, the question I had, um, oh, Nelson, it, the, the, I'll just say my question I had was, is it possible for them to keep the sales at five? But somehow we allow the use of seven unregistered vehicles in the parking spaces? Or does the license have to be for twelve if that's the right number? I'm, I'm not sure on that. Uh, but Nelson.
Yeah, I think what Michelle said is, is accurate, that the special permit overrides the license. So the special permit would have to be in place prior to the licensing, agreeing to whatever number you come up with. So just as an example, if for some reason you all decide tonight to change, uh, his number from five to ten, he would then be allowed through zoning to have ten, but he'd still have to go to the city council and get that license adjusted to ten. But the licensing committee would not change that number to ten if the special permit says five. And as far as the unregistered, uh, vehicles, that's an interesting question. As far as I'm concerned, the special permit governs what's allowed on the property. So if for some reason the planning board decides that they could have, um, seven unregistered vehicles, but only five assigned to a class two license, which is used vehicles, then that's what they'd be allowed to have.
Okay. Thank you. Are you all set, Stephanie?
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions? That was the only, the, the question I had with regard to, with regard to the whole license for sale versus unregistered on the lot. No other questions from Michelle? Does someone want to entertain a motion? Ken Antinucci.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table the petition, to provide, to provide an opportunity for the petitioner to address the issues raised during the public hearing and stated in the planning recommendation and to develop and submit accurate and complete plans for review, for review.
Okay, can you be more specific about the, um, the issues that you want to see resolved? Is it the ones that were listed in the?
What was listed?
The violations listed in the staff report?
Yes, in, in the planning recommendation. What's listed there and whatever other issues that were raised during this whole public hearing process, which I believe are all documented by what Michelle has here.
Okay. And you, you, uh, believe we should have, uh, as-built plans?
Not as-built plans, but.
The best part, the last part, what do you mean by that?
We'll complete the plans and submit plans for review because we really don't have complete plans. And he's, the petitioner said he was going to approach and get an architect to drop complete plans, which I would assume would include parking, uh, the parking layout as well.
Well, you, you should specify that. So you want architectural plans?
Yes, I mean, I was trying to leave it as open-ended as I could, but yes, if we, we need to be specific. So complete architectural plans for development, which also include parking, the parking layout, site plans.
But you're not talking about construction drawings. You're just talking about concept drawings?
The plans that we, to the level of detail, that we would need to review to be able to approve the special permit. I know we can have, there's different levels of progress drawings and things like that, as long as they were complete enough so that we could reference in our recommendation, built as per plans like we usually do.
So plans.
Plans prepared by a professional with all the requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
What, what about a, um, use of the B and M?
He can also, again, I mean, I was trying to just make it as general, but yes, to include that. I mean, if he comes to us with plans that include the parking on that right of way, he should also have those, the, uh, you know, the, the license or the letter in hand. If he's not going to include those, then he wouldn't need those, that, that license agreement. But it seems to meet the parking requirements. He's going to need a license agreement if he's going to include parking in that paved area on the right of way that he currently doesn't have.
So an encroachment agreement or license for any parking or use of the MBT right of way?
Yes.
Or just say for any use of?
And also potentially for, thank you Diane, for the, uh, storage of a dumpster.
Okay, so we'll say for any use of the MBT right of way, we'll say parking, dumpster. What was the other thing?
I think that was it.
Okay.
I'd just say any proposed use, any proposed use.
Any use, but I'll, we'll list those two things.
Of the right of way.
Yeah, it's better to be as specific as possible. Yeah.
Including the parking and storage of temporary dumpsters.
Oh, storage, that was the other thing. Parking, dumpster, storage, okay.
We don't want storage there.
Okay, so parking or dumpster.
We're just talking about the dumpster, the cars.
Do you have any questions, Michelle?
No, I think I had that motion to table, to allow petitioner to provide, to provide the opportunity to address the issues listed in the staff report, specifically the violations, to develop and submit complete plans for review, architectural plans, parking layout slash site plan with all the requirements. In your checklist, I'll reference that. And then an encroachment agreement, up with slash license, for any proposed use of the MBT right of way. And I'll put, i.e. parking dumpster.
Okay.
Does that sound like everything?
And, um, Mr. Murphy, do you understand that? Do you understand what we're proposing? We're proposing to table it, to give you an opportunity to clean up some of the issues that were raised with regard to the parking and the equipment and the debris and stuff, and to also, um, get more detailed plans and to, um, initiate and try to get a, uh, use of that right of way.
Right, I, I do, I do. And, and I think it's a win for me and I think it's a win for Malden. I do.
Okay, and hopefully it gives you some flexibility to move forward in, in what you need, but it also addresses some of the concerns we've, we have and have had with previous owners of the site.
Yeah, I hope I never get compared and, and, you know, there has to be a start from where I'm at, where I'm at.
Okay, thank you. Um, Eric McCush.
I can second that motion.
Okay, so Eric McCush has seconded the motion.
Do you have all regular members voting on this?
Yes, um, the regular members will be voting.
The two associates are not voting.
They are not.
Want me to do that?
Hold on a second.
Okay. Go ahead.
Ken Antinucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Tawadage Gavrisalasi?
Yes.
Okay, go.
Lisa Gray?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Henry Susi?
Yes.
Chuck Iovin?
Yes. So the motion's been ta-, the petition's been tabled. And the quicker you're able to resolve these things, the quicker we can get you on to the next available meeting. Okay, thank you very.
I will, I will send you, um, an email that itemizes what the board decided. So you'll have that. Okay, yeah.
Thank you. And Mr. Miller, thank you very much for, uh, filling in the gaps that we needed. Appreciate your, uh, assistance. Thank you.
And because this was tabled, so both Ronnie and Stephanie, if you need to participate in the next hearing, you can because you've heard all the testimony and discussion. So if there's another member absent, when we take it off the table, that's good that everybody was here.
Yes.
So we'll still have a full board, so.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Eric, uh, Henry. Do you have a update for the, um, CPC?
Still not. Why, yes, I do. I thank you, Mr. Chair. As far as CPC's concerns, we're moving right along with the business at hand. We, uh, just entered some letters to, in support of, uh, giving the city another look at possibilities of saving the far, the historic building in the city. The library work continues on. Also, it should be noted that in the, in the vein of fun facts, Mr. Miller mentioned that, you know, Malden leads with regards to encroachments. I had to, if you give, give me a little. I had to, if you give, give me a little attitude, I had the occasion to, to go visit Stafford, Texas, and it gave me an opportunity to witness another community experience exactly what we were, some of the very similar things of what we were doing, and what we were experiencing in that regards to term limits, and charters, and, and, and moving on from that, that thought I had the occasion to go to the city council meeting to, it was because a friend of mine was being, my sister, actually, who I'd just met the year before, and I'm north of 60, invited me to stay at her home, and she was being considered for a similar board as this, the planning board in the town of Stafford, Texas. Another fun fact about Stafford, Texas, the mayor of Stafford served for 50 years. Just Google mayor of Stafford, it, his house is bigger than City Hall. So, you know, term limits, it, it doesn't really matter if, if you are an elected official, or a city staffer, or the third branch of city government, the, the, the appointees that are charged with doing the city work. How long you serve is at your behest, especially if you are a volunteer, and love of the job has to be with something. So, in order to change term limits, you have to go to the charter, unless, I guess, I stand corrected, I, I, I open up to correction. In order to change somebody's term limit, you would have to go to the charter.
I, I would think so.
Yeah.
I don't think that we have term limits.
Right.
I think to establish them.
So, so we'd need to establish them, right?
The charter has to change.
The charter has to change, so we sit in a unique position that we have, we, our positions are up for debate by public, because we, they are supposed to be, you sign a res, well, you send in a resume, you apply for the job, it's supposed to be open to do these sort of things, but term limits, we don't have term limits, right?
Not in Malden, to my knowledge.
No, okay, so we, we're very, but I went with my sister Lisa to go for, to go to this planning board, then also on the, on the CPC is our, the chair, co-chair, former chair, Lisa, Lisa Solder, who hands down is the best at what she does, for, we're lucky to have her, as far as CPC is concerned. If she's not, I don't know many people who would volunteer to do what she does. I'll just leave it like that. And because of term limits, and for someone to have that type of passion to do the work, but because of term limits, because she is an appointed member to the CPC, not a committee member to the CPC, she has term limits. A committee member to the CCC from the Housing and Planning Board can go indefinitely. 30 years, 50 years, indefinitely. We don't have term limits. We don't, we're not beholden to nobody's paycheck, we're not beholden to nobody's vote, we're just doing it really for some ulterior motives, the love of the job, so. I said all that to say, Lisa's term limiting out, and if, if, if it's a, if I had a vote to vote her back in, or to continue what she does, I would definitely support that. It's not about if you're elected, what branch of government it is, it's about loyalty and the fealty to, to the person and to the job, and I want to stand up for, and as far as CPC is concerned, give my fealty and my loyalty to Lisa for what she's done for CPC and the city of Malden. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I agree, we're lucky to have Lisa and all her commitment,
Okay, Michelle, MBTA, community zoning.
Yes, there's a link on the agenda, that I, you get the paper copy also, I had emailed it to you, that is, if you would like to see the final zoning ordinance as it was ordained by the city council, that's what was filed with the state, and I just wanted to give you the update, we did meet the deadline, it was filed before December 31st, we did get our notice that it was received, and we are considered to be in interim compliance while they review it, they will give us comments back if there are any changes that need to be made, but everything was in, and that was the final, final product. There were some changes since, that happened after the hearing, so if you want to talk to me about those, we can offline, or you can just look and see, that's a copy of the final paper, that was, as I said, filed with the state. So, I want to just give you that update.
Thank you, was there anything else you, you left?
I was going to also attach to the agenda, gave you a copy of, and I'm not sure if I did this before, I was saying to Chuck, I, I could have sworn I gave this up before, but maybe I didn't, maybe I just talked about it. City council has proposed that we begin to look at the master plan, and specifically update, and also, there's, part of their request is also to, they called it modernize the zoning, but there's some information in this, I gave you a copy of the order. So, I've met with a couple of the councils so far, Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development is doing the administrative management of the project, and of course, they have the funds, that's where the funding is coming from, so I'll be working with them, we're just doing some internal planning, if you will, and I will bring you updates as they happen. There will be, as this says, an RFP, you know, to hire a consultant to actually begin the master planning activities. This board, of course, as you know, is authorized by statute, you are the board to file the master plan with the state, so you will absolutely be involved, you have to be involved, so I will keep you updated as things move forward. We've only had one, I think we had one meeting, and they're trying to call for another one just to get things moving. I'm not sure how much funding's available, but we'll see. So, I just wanted to give you a copy of that. It's been talked about lately in a few of the council meetings, the quote, master plan, master planning that we're going to be doing, that's, this is what they're talking about, updating the master plan that we last updated in 2010. So, that's it, just wanted to give that update, thanks.
Thank you very much. Next meeting is April 10th, presuming we have hearings. There's a couple tabled items, tonight's being one of them. I don't know if they'll be able to resolve everything in the next month, but there is another, there is another petition on Medford Street that we had tabled, so presuming if something comes in, or one of those table positions, papers, petitions are ready, we will expect to meet on the 10th of April.
I know it's-
There you go.
For the last time, for the night, point of privilege, Mr. Chair, I, I'll, I'll take credit for our light schedule here lately, as of late here, the meetings we've, our really light schedule last couple of months.
Oh, yes. You're taking care, okay, well, thank you very much, Eric.
Thank you very much, too, you're welcome. You can thank me later.
Anyone have anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Can I?
Diane Chuha, seconded by Tawadaj Gabrisalasi, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And everyone?
I'm sorry for the talking fits.
Yes. See you all later, happy Easter to those that celebrate.